The town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, tonight we're going to begin our meeting with some special presentations. We have some firefighter service awards. We have a number of firefighters and their respective families here this evening. So I would like to ask Councilwoman Nazo to take that on, and he will be taking over. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening as we present members of the Plainville Fire Department with firefighter service recognition awards. And before I get to the presentation, I'd like to say thank you to all the members of the Plainville Fire Department for their dedication to not only Plainville but to all people in need. In preparing for this evening, I came across a USA Today editorial about volunteer firefighters from April of 2015 that I believe sums up who those dedicated men and women are, and I'd like to share just a brief excerpt with you if I may. Thank you, volunteer firefighters. Thank you for putting your lives on the line to save people and property. You are mayors, mechanics, business owners, teachers, and farmers. You have given up your holidays, your free time, and sacrificed your day jobs to protect others. You don't get paid, or if you do, it's very little. You don't receive benefits. You jump out of bed at night when your town needs you, and you do it not knowing whether it will be your last call. But they do it because they love their town. They do it because they love their neighbors, and we don't thank them enough. We don't appreciate them until it's our burning house they are running into or our child they are tending to after a car accident. We don't appreciate them until one is gone. So thank you, volunteer firefighters. Thanks to all first responders. So it is with great pleasure I present the following members of the Plainville Fire Department with their firefighter service recognition awards. When I call your name, please join me at the podium. Jacob Marinowski, five years. Taylor Doughty, five years. Jake Damato, five years. Reverend Dr. James Karen, 15 years. Michael Schneider, 20 years. Raymond Moreau, 30 years. And again, on behalf of the Plainville Town Council, let me thank you once again for your service, your dedication, and just know that we always have you on our thoughts, and keep doing the great work that you're doing. Thank you.
I too would like to add my personal thanks to those celebrating these milestone anniversaries. Forty years, you must have started when you were a child, or not long after your teens, I would say. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you, of course, for your dedication to Plainville. That's a business that not everybody can get into, and your bravery and your skills and your dedication to being a volunteer firefighter speaks volumes. So to you and to your families, who are also very important to this that carries on, I want to thank you very much again on behalf of the Town Council. At this point, we can take a brief recess if you would like to carry on. I know you have things you have to do, and we can take a moment for you and your families to take some photos, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. We'll take a brief recess. We will carry on throughout the rest of our agenda. We do not have a public hearing tonight, but I will now ask for minutes of the previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes from January 6, 2020, regular meeting and January 7, 2020, special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports? Does anybody have anything to report tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was lucky enough to attend a celebration for Dr. King along with you yesterday morning, and it was absolutely amazing. It was something I really enjoyed. We saw the choir while heard the choir from the NAACP sing. We also saw dancers from the Tower of Hope Church and the Anointed Praise Grace Baptist Church dance. And the main speaker was Latonya Farrell. She's actually the vice principal of Bristol Eastern High School. So it was really a great, great celebration, and I feel honored that I was able to attend that with you.
Yeah, well, it was wonderful. There were a number of people from Plainville that attended it, so it was a good celebration, and probably one of the more lively ones that I've gone to, my second one, but they're all very nice and certainly noteworthy to remember the contributions of Dr. Martin Luther King and his quest for not only educating people. He was a marvelous orator, and of course, he was a leader in the civil rights movement back in the '60s. So it was very good. And yes, you're right, the talent was amazing.
Yep.
Okay. Is there anybody else that has anything to report?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just very briefly, I attended the January meetings of the Conservation Commission and the library trustees, and the focus of both meetings really was the preparation of the budget for FY '21.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Well, I don't have a report, but I do have a bit of an announcement. I would like to note that this is Scott Colby's last Town Council meeting with the Plainville Town Council. Scott will be leaving us at the end of this week and will become the Assistant Town Manager in Windsor, Connecticut. Congratulations. We will surely miss you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you will enjoy great success, and you've done a great job here, and we will watch and pay close attention to how you're doing, and I'm sure you will be crossing paths with our Town Manager, Mr. Lee, at various functions, so he'll keep us up to date. But again, sincerest congratulations. That's a wonderful thing for you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it very much. Plainville's been great the last few years, and I definitely won't forget my roots here.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, that's all I have. If anybody has anything else, if not, we'll move on to the next appointments. Appointments and resignations, we have a few things to take care of tonight.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have a few. Motion to appoint Trevor Bukas as a regular firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Elijah Spada as a regular firefighter to the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Larry Sutherland as support staff to the Plainville Fire Department effective January 25, 2020.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to ratify the Town Manager's appointment of Linnell Noble Sixth Peace Court to the Conservation Commission for the term ending January 15, 2021.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any others that we need to take care of? I think that took care of it all. Okay, thank you for that. Board of Education liaison, third Monday meetings. The Board of Education tonight is beginning their budget work session deliberations due to the holiday yesterday. They're going to begin tonight, so our report is unavailable. However, they will be having another work session this coming Thursday, 7:00 p.m., the Plainville Learning Center. And if necessary, there will be another work session on the following Monday, same location, same time, 7:00 p.m., the Plainville Learning Center at Plainville High School. So if anybody's interested in attending those work sessions, they're open to the public. Okay. Report of the Town Attorney. Do we have any report tonight?
No report.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. On to the report of the Town Manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have several items, the first of which is road bond phase two. Town staff has recently met regarding the proposed streets to be repaved under the first year of the phase two $5 million road bond program. The recommendation for 2020 includes 25 streets involving approximately four miles of road. Some of the major streets on the list include Arcadia Avenue, Norton Park Road, East Broad Street, Robert Holcombe Way, Julie Road, Roseanne Lane, Locust Street, and a portion of Norton Trail. The complete list of the recommended streets was included in the meeting information package. And the total estimated cost to repave the 25 streets is $1.152 million. Town staff is also recommending authorization to purchase up to $100,000 worth of catch basins tops and other related products from United Concrete Products, and up to $50,000 for concrete blocks and brick from Cromwell Concrete utilizing a state bid price. There is an item in the new business regarding both recommended purchases. Monies would come from the road bond authorization. Finally, Town Staff is once again recommending authorization to hire Jones Construction Company to assist the roadways department in the repair of the catch basins prior to paving. Jones Construction was the low bidder for this work in 2018 and has performed their work in an exemplary fashion over the last two years. They have agreed to hold their original unit prices from 2018. The estimated amount of their work would be, quote, "not to exceed $50,000," unquote. These monies would also come from the road bond authorization, and there is an item in the new business regarding this recommendation. Town Staff expects to begin paving work in the spring. Next item I have is the Public Investment Community Index. The State Office of Policy and Management prepares what is called the Public Investment Community Index, otherwise known as the PIC index, for the cities and towns in Connecticut. The PIC index measures the relative wealth and need of Connecticut towns by ranking them in descending order by their cumulative point allocations based upon five factors. These five factors are: one, per capita income; two, adjusted equalized grand list per capita; three, equalized mill rate; four, per capita aid to children receiving temporary family assistance program benefits; and five, the unemployment rate. Towns ranked in the top quartile, or 42 or less, in the PIC rankings are eligible for financial assistance programs that various agencies administer. These financial assistance programs include the Urban Action Bond Assistance, Community Economic Development Program, Residential Mortgage Guarantee Program, Malpractice Insurance Purchase Program, and the Enterprise Corridor Zone designation. Plainville has been eligible under the PIC index for many years and has taken advantage of several programs that were listed. In the year 2012, Plainville was ranked number 33 on the PIC index. In 2020, Plainville now stands at number 44. Moving down the list means that, according to the state, we have become wealthier than 10 other towns in Connecticut over the last eight years. Towns considered less wealthy than Plainville include Mansfield, Windsor, which is where Scott is going, Bloomfield, East Windsor, Enfield, Bristol, Plymouth, and Seymour, just to name a few. This is somewhat both good and bad news. The good news is that overall Plainville has gotten financially better since 2012, at least in comparison to other Connecticut towns. The bad news is that if we continue this trend, we will become ineligible for some of the state assistance programs. It's just a measure of, at least one measure, of how the state determines how some of their programs will be allocated to communities in Connecticut. Next item I have is the release of a portion of open space on Camp and Bradley Streets. At the January 6 meeting, the Town Council reviewed a request from Trumbull Homes that a portion of land located on Camp Street and owned by the town for open space purposes be released to the Trumbull Homes Homeowners Association. This land is located on the south side of the New Britton Water Company easement. This transfer would allow the association to landscape a steep slope and relieve the town from maintaining this area. The land would remain as open space and private ownership prevented from future development. Because this land consists of a steep slope that would require attention and resources going forward by whoever owns the land, there are advantages to transferring ownership from the town to the association. At the January 6 meeting of the Town Council, you referred the request to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their recommendation pursuant to 8-24 of the Connecticut general statutes. On January 14, the P&amp;Z met and approved a motion to, quote, "approve the release of a portion of the land at 161 Camp Street and 25 Bradley Street to Trumbull Homes," unquote. The Town Council wishes to approve this request. There is an item under new business for your consideration. Next item I have is the Grand List, October 1, 2019, Anne Marine Hearing. Town assessor has completed the October 1, 2019 Grand List. The Grand List is the value of all property in Plainville. It includes real estate, motor vehicles, and personal property. For 2019, the Grand List increased by $15,678,860, or 1.12%. This is almost twice the increase from last year. This is the largest non-revaluation increase in the last 15 years. Real estate value has increased by $4.6 million, or 0.4%. Personal property increased by $7.2 million, or 7.29%, and motor vehicles increased by $3.9 million, or 2.71%. Based on the current mill rate, the increase in revenues to the fiscal year 21 Town Budget would be $542,802. That's all I have for the moment. I'd like to turn it over to Scott Colby to do the financial dashboard for the first six months of the Town Budget and also address some happenings.
Good evening. Looking at the expenditures through December 31 of 2019, the overall Town Budget is coming in at about 46.95%, which is slightly under the two-year average at 47.95%. The general government side is running slightly higher than the two-year average, while the Board of Education is coming in slightly lower than their two-year average. Looking at some of the overtime costs, the police overtime is running in at 64.56%, which is lower than their two-year average, while roadways overtime and buildings and grounds overtime are running at a higher than their two-year average costs. The snow overtime for both roadways and buildings and grounds is also higher than their two-year averages, just due to the fact that we had some earlier snowstorms this past winter. Looking at the hauler tonnages, we're coming in at about 301 tons over our two-year average. And looking at the recycling tonnages, we added some additional lines here. So we did a budgeted at $40 for the tip fee, and we estimate it at 1,600 tons for about $64,000 for that line item. Right now, we have gone to 699 tons, and the expenditures to date are coming in at about $60,683. So if you project this out at a current tip fee of $86, the projection looks like it's coming in roughly about $117,000. Looking at the revenue side, we are running higher in both of the all revenues category as well as the current taxes category. We're running at about 59% received in all revenues compared to the two-year average of 53%, while the current taxes are coming in at 68% over the two-year average at 62%. The estimated unassigned fund balance remains at 15%. And for the special funds, the only item to really point out is the Robertson Airport. Looking at the expenditures through this year, we're looking at 41.81%, while the two-year average is higher, and that's just due to some of the project costs that we've done in the past that were part of the grants that we've received, while the revenue side is just running in slightly lower at this time with a current fund balance at $489,000. Moving on to the major projects portion, the only items that really had any expenditures in the month of December were the phosphorus removal project and the Wheeler School project, and there was a minor payment made for the Northwest Drive rehabilitation project. Those projects are coming in under budget and ahead of schedule as well. And that's all I have to report on for the financial dashboard. Moving on to the happenings, I just have two items from the senior center, one being that they are offering a library series that is tomorrow at 1:00 p.m., and this is learning how to access and navigate online library resources, and they have a new program called RB Digital for recorded books, and this service enables library patrons to access audiobooks, ebooks, magazines, comics, entertainment, educational offerings, and more within one app. And then on Thursday, January 23, at 10:00 a.m., they're having a seminar that is free on wound healing. Learn more about the seven essential steps in wound care and basic diabetic education. This is being presented by Dr. Nicholas Verdura of the Hartford Healthcare Medical Group. That's all I have to report on.
Thank you, Scott, for your final presentation.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Scott with their reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just on the state rankings for the PIC, just wanted to add to that, and I know I spoke to Robert earlier today, that obviously is done annually, and also you don't get put off or made ineligible for a number of years. So there is some protection, certainly if it's a one or two-year aberration. They do carry you over for a number of years, as in terms of eligibility.
For example, we wouldn't be eligible if we were at number 44 if we hadn't been higher previously, so we still have a few more years before we would fall off the program, assuming that we stay below the 42.
Do you have a number as to what we currently receive because of our ranking in some of those grants? Do you have, you know, just for example, if we ended up, of course, improving our position, do you know what the impact would be financially?
Well, I know that the PIC index is one of the items that was used to determine the ECS formula.
Oh.
And the need for it. And it's one of the reasons why our formula shows us going, increasing over the next 10 years rather than many other Connecticut communities that are actually going to see a decrease over the next, well, it's nine years now because they started it last year. So I think that formula is in place, and they're gradually trying to get to that point. That's what they're doing over a longer period of time. So, you know, I don't anticipate they're going to go back and recalculate the, you know, the ECS formula anytime soon, but we could be surprised.
Okay. And are there any others that are of any substance that we would be impacted by?
Well, we have received in the past Urban Act appropriations, which are through the bond authorization. Some of the projects that we received monies for included recreation projects, specifically some of the improvements to Norton Park. For example, over the last several years, there was one or two other economic development monies that we received as well. The Enterprise Zones designation down in the southern end of town was as a result of being eligible under the PIC index and being adjacent to Sudington. That had some Enterprise Zone eligibility as well. You know, those are not necessarily ongoing revenues, but, you know, they gave us some advantages due to the fact that we were ranked within the top 42, which is where you don't want to be necessarily.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the Town Manager? All right. Thank you for that. Moving on, we are in our public comment portion of our meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak to the council. I have two folks that have signed up to speak. We'll give them that courtesy first, and then we'll open it up for anybody else that wishes to do so. Art Marino, you are at the top of the list.
Art Marino, 22 Tuttle Street, Bristol, Connecticut. First things first, I've got two things I'd like to talk about. First thing is, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Lee, Town Council, the citizens of Plainville, and the citizens that went through the nature park. They supported me in what I've been going through for the past couple of months, and as you can see, the new kidney is working, so I will be around.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Now, the second thing, seeing that I wasn't around in November to give a report about the nature park, we did good again. We had 216 people go through. That's not counting what we had go through the gate, okay? We still had four bear sightings, three with tags. The geese were back. We had two swans this time. We had a couple blue herring. And the people next door, no more complaints because the turtles have been laying eggs in the sand bed that we set up. So I guess you're not going to put me out of business now. I'm back, and I'm going to stay back.
Great. We're happy to see that.
So I thank everybody for their support, and I'm here to stay.
Great.
Thank you.
Stay well. Thank you, Art. Next on our list is Joanne Edman.
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. For the benefit of Carol and this evening's Town Council minutes, I oppose any trail or alignment that will be near, next to, or on any properties in Plainville, especially Pearon Road, Pure Street, and other streets being impacted, also Norton Park and the Mule Hall Trail. It is intrusive and invasive and does not belong in this town. First tonight, I would like to extend my sincere apologies, when I'm wrong, I will admit it, to Representative Pettit and Scott Miller. I did interrupt them during their time at the podium at the last Town Council meeting, and I apologize for that. My intent was not to interrupt them. However, I had found out just prior to that, or while they were there, that... However, I had found out just prior to that, or while they were there, that while they were speaking, that town employee Lee took it upon himself to shut off my mic. I was using, I was, I was using, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my eyes. He took it upon himself to shut my mic off I was using while I was at the podium. You can clearly see this and hear this on the video. It's, but he was caught doing it. As a taxpayer, resident, voter, and one of his employers paying the taxes, I find this behavior to be unprofessional, disrespectful, offensive, and unacceptable. I believe I am owed an apology for this behavior by this town employee. You can do that now, or do, do this now if you would like to.
Almost there.
Okay. You can, you can do that, see, because this town employee found this unprofessional behavior acceptable, and you, as the Town Council, believe this is okay, I would like to know how I can go about filing a formal complaint. It was recently brought to our attention by another resident that the title of Town Manager does not require a review by the Town Council or anyone else. This is also unprofessional by the Town Council and should be changed immediately. I would like to make my formal complaint part of this personal, of his personal file and 2020 review. How do I go about doing this?
Can you wrap up? Your time has expired.
I'm done.
Oh, thank you.
I'm done.
Okay.
How about that? How do I go about this, Kathy?
I think you just made your complaint.
Is there special paper or something?
I'm trying to answer. You just made your complaint. The people sitting here heard it.
Yep. Okay. Well, I would hope that it would make it part of his file.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? John?
John Kissleck, 65 Forestwood Avenue. Good evening, Town Council. Robert, Scott.
Hello.
Hi, John.
Again, another thing I hate doing, we lost the CPOA in the town. Plainville lost a fine citizen, Jack Susko passed away. He wasn't active with us the last couple of years because of illness, but we remember his painting expertise and help when we did some repair work at Potter's Creek Park a few years back. He was, he was a great guy. The other thing I have is, Scott, congratulations. I'm sure the town is going to miss your part of what you do every day in the sound government. So I wish you all the best in your, your new venture and your first step towards being a Town Manager somewhere. So good luck. The other thing I have, Chairwoman Gleasy was there. I went to the Board of Education meeting to tell them how I would cut $103,300 off their capital budget. Another thing about that, here's our three-minute thing again. When I got up, Becky Terrell told me I had three minutes, and I stood before and said, I need more than that. She says, okay, I'll give you five, John. She let me talk until I was finished, which was real nice. It must have caught her at a weak moment or something, because I know that if Becky Terrell had a choice between letting me speak at a Board of Ed meeting and Route Canal, she would take Route Canal. So.
I think you talked for three minutes, John. You weren't up there very long.
It seemed like it was longer.
No, it was pretty quick.
The other thing I have, you guys are going to like me for this one. The delinquent tax list, you know, I really hope nobody ever has to have delinquent taxes. I think, I think it's bad, you know, that somebody has bad times or whatever, and they get behind like that. But last year, I think we collected a pretty good amount of money, it's over 200,000 or whatever. This year, again, we're going to be another 200-something thousand. Now, when these taxes are delinquent, all the taxpayers in town have to make up for that. We have to balance the budget, you have to set a mill rate with us. So my way of thinking, I'd like to see a way to return that to the taxpayers. I'd like to see a delinquent tax fund set up in town, that any time delinquent funds come back in, they go into that fund, minus any fees or interest, which would go wherever you send them. And then at budget, I'm almost done, should get the, the second bell.
You have 30 seconds.
Then at the budget, like what you're going to be setting pretty soon, you take all of that money out for that year and use it towards balancing our budget. I mean, this is just my idea. You might as well do it that way instead of throwing it general, general fund. And now, if we have too much money, we're going to get hurt. So let's spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Yes, sir.
Son? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's on.
Levi Bichard, 37 Wayne Drive, and I apologize if this is not the time and place to speak to this. Received a notice of violation in the mail for parking on my own grass. If I'm incorrect at this time of speaking of it, please let me know, and we'll go from there. But apparently, I can't park a registered insured vehicle with current property taxes on my grass. However, on my street, people could throw TVs out on the street that have been there for more than six months. I have a drug dealer selling drugs out of his house that's two houses away from me. They're the school zone, by the way. We have car dealers with cars on their grass. We have people with trailers on their grass, but somehow I got targeted for this. I'm normally not one to complain, but you have a parking ban in effect, which is I find I have no problem with. That's why, therefore, we park a vehicle on the grass in the wintertime of the parking van. I clear the sidewalks, I clear the spots, I keep the road clear of everything, but yet I get a letter in the mail. So either someone has too much time on their hands to worry about what I'm doing, and I'm sure other people, but meanwhile, like I said, I have a drug dealer two houses up from me. I have two TVs on the street, a bookcase from stuff. I have pictures of this. And the car dealers, I have their cars on the yard as well. So I'm not sure what to do about this. I plan to continue parking on my grass, considering I'm a tax property owner. I pay taxes, it's my yard, not the city's, mine. My vehicles are registered and they're insured. So I don't know what the next step is, but that's what I'm doing.
I, I don't have an answer for you. I am not fully versed in the specifics of vehicles being parked on grass on the property owners.
It's a zoning violation.
So how is it that the car dealers could do this, and everybody else could do this, or we could throw all this stuff on the street, like garbage that's been there for six months at least?
It's a zoning violation on a residential property, number one. Number two, if, we've sent out at least 22, 23 letters to people who are parking on their front lawn, and, and we send violations when we're aware of them. So if you have information you'd like to give us about TVs or things being left in the curb, not everybody complies with the letters that we send them. For those who don't comply, we send it over to the town attorney, eventually end up in court. So.
Okay, and closing statements?
That goes for people who leave stuff at the curb sometimes. You know, we, we send letters to them, and I don't know if that's the case on Wayne Drive, but if you can give us the specific information, we'll check our files and see where that stands. If not, we'll, we'll send them a letter as well.
Well, I don't have the exact addresses, but I would suggest driving down Wayne Drive during the day, or even right now, for that matter, you will see these stuff.
Okay. We'll do that.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Roberta, did you raise your hand? Okay.
Roberta Loria, 18 Perron Road. For the benefit of Carroll and this evening's Town Council minutes, I oppose any trail or alignment that will be on, next to, or have an impact on any neighborhood in Plainville. Nine days after our last Town Council meeting, a very serious incident happened less than 50 miles from my home. An 11-year-old girl was abducted while walking home from school. Thanks to citizens in the community, the child was found and the abductor, abductor arrested. He was found to have a knife in the car that was used during the abduction. I am mentioning this because this is exactly what I express concern over in the past evening.
Just a minute, Roberta.
Yes, ma'am.
Did, did this happen in Plainville?
This happened in Springfield.
Massachusetts?
Yes.
Okay. Was it adjacent to a trail?
Pardon me?
Was it adjacent to a trail in Springfield, Massachusetts?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
This is exactly what I was expressing concern over. I talked about, this came true, that I talked about for this family. Thank God this child was found safely. Unfortunately, she may take years to heal from this incident. What do people need to do or say to make you understand sticking people with something that they want nothing to do with is a bad idea? It's not a matter of if something will happen on this trail, it's when. We are already having enough issues with theft. Things are going on. You just had a man up here before us talk about a drug dealer, two houses from him. The police aren't able to handle everything that's going on, and you want to add to that. Having this trail is only going to exacerbate, exacerbate that. Stop this nonsense now and get rid of this trail. The second thing I'd like to ask is an email regarding, an email I had sent you regarding a requested correction to the minutes
Right.
of the last Town Council meeting.
Right.
And I was wondering how that works, having not had these issues before.
Well, the minutes that we, that are posted are drafts, you realize, they're a draft. The council had, I don't even know if everybody on the council had seen them when you did. I did respond to your email. I also communicated with our town clerk, and the minutes that were approved tonight, specifically for what you said two weeks ago, read this way. Roberta Loria, 18 Perron Road, voiced her concerns for children's safety, spoke in opposition of alignment C in the teacher's salary increases.
Yes, and that's not what I had said.
That's what we, that's what we approved.
But I had given you enough information ahead of time for that correction to be made. If you look at the video, that is not what I said.
We approved them according to what the town clerk put in. As, as you know, Roberta, we do not do verbatim minutes.
I understand.
And the minutes that we approve are a synopsis of what happens, and from what I can recall, and I can go back and look at my personal notes from last, the last time you spoke, I will confirm that. But I trust that the town clerk condensed her minutes to accurately reflect what the intent of your statement was.
I think that they need to be looked at again, because that's not exactly, that's not what I said, and it implies in these minutes that I believe this trail is okay, and that's not what I'm saying.
It said, you spoke in opposition of alignment C. That does not imply that you are okay with it.
I understand that.
I believe these words are clear.
I never said alignment C. I said the trail.
Is that not alignment C?
That is part of the trail, but it is not the trail. I oppose anything going on with this trail that's going to impact homes.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Mr. Edman?
Edman. Joel Edman, 63 Hollyberry Lane. No rail, no trail, and no thank you. Greetings, Plainville Town Council, Town Manager, Mr. Lee. I said this before, I am not opposed to rails, to trails, to close the gap, but I am opposed to any other alignment through Plainville that does not adhere to the original plan to utilize the abandoned railroad bed to close several gaps for the heritage trail due to the fact that it severely negatively affects adjoining homeowners and taxpayers' traffic, environmental concerns, Norton Park, and especially me and my neighbors, as well as Perron Road, Franklin Avenue, Pierce Street, Broad Street, Hemingway Street, and Town Line Road. Within the last two weeks, I noticed the state of Connecticut surveyors' van parked empty in front of my and my neighbor's house. In talking briefly to Scott Bushy, he proclaimed that they could go anywhere they needed to go regardless of permission of the landowner. I was relating that they passed through our land to quickly get to the Mule Hall tow path behind our houses, where it appears that they want to construct a trail either on top of or alongside of it. I witnessed the surveyors banging in more stakes into the Mule Hall tow path. My feeling is that if they take the liberty of cutting through a shortcut to the newly constructed trail, what is to stop everybody else to cut through? No trespassing signs do not work most of the time, and I should not have to worry and deal with those people who choose to cut through quickly without walking down to Norton Park, which the trail should not be there in the first place, because it is not only intrusive, but also illegal if one interprets the original deed correctly. Last year, when Tim Malone, one of the original trail organizers, walked the Mule Hall tow path, recognized how close it was to the backs side of the houses on Hollyberry Lane and Condeal Lane, some as close as 60 feet away. He recommended that the trail was to be constructed, if it was to be constructed, that it would be across the wetlands, approximately 100 or so feet to the east on town land and high ground, and also eliminating building two extra bridges, much to my neighbor's emotional relief. I'm almost done. Hikers and bikers are getting through town just fine without a trail gap being constructed, and I am definitely opposed to it being constructed, as well as other trails being considered, possibly being planned from Connecticut Fast Track in New Britain to downtown Plainville. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Mr. Spencer?
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. It's been said that the New England Town Meeting is probably the best example of pure democracy that we can find in America. I grew up in a small Connecticut town where they did have a town meeting, and I can remember my parents attending them, maybe not all the time, but once in a while. What we have here today is probably the closest thing to a town meeting, but, you know, that we have in Plainville. But it's not really a town meeting. At the last council meeting, I made a few points, and after, afterwards, towards the end of the meeting, the points that I made were responded to by Mr. Lee and a representative from the Board of Education. Now, at the time, I felt I would have really liked to respond to what they said about what I said. And because my three minutes of democracy were all up here, I was not given the opportunity to make any points or question what they were saying. And I sincerely would like you to consider, you know, for the sake of democracy, for the sake of being able to have a dialogue, you know, that, maybe we shouldn't have this council meeting set up in such a way that, you know, Mr. Lee or somebody else from the government gets the final word, and then we close the door. I mean, if they feel the need to respond to something that was I mean, if they feel the need to respond to something that was said here, whoever said it should be able to have the opportunity to respond, maybe get a little dialogue going, maybe recover some of that town meeting spirit that New England was once famous for. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Yes, sir.
Dave Albert, 56 Hollyberry Lane. I really wasn't going to speak, but since Mr. Spencer brought this up, I believe that what he was talking about was the 10-year average for the Board of Ed increase. And I think what was talked about was the fact that the representation was made that the budget was going to go up $1 million a year or something. And using a 10-year average, I think Mr. Lee said that it was more like a half a million a year that it averaged. But that just sounded, I wasn't here last week, but I did see it on the Nutmeg TV. And I believe Mr. Spencer's point, which is well-taken, is the fact that over the last three years, it has been over $1 million increase. And it's, I mean, I did the numbers here. I took them off of the Board of Ed presentation that was done. And you've got increase in payroll benefits 2017-18, $600,000. 18-19, $2 million. 19-20, $1 million. Now, granted, some of this is payroll, but the big thing that's driving this is the insurance, the medical insurance. Medical insurance increase, $1.5 million 2018-19. $200,000 in 2017, 18, 19, and 20. So again, it depends on, if you want to use a 10-year average, he's totally correct. If you want to use a three-year average, it's a legitimate concern of people to watch. I mean, it's there in the Board of Ed numbers. You can see it. It spikes right out. And like I said, 2017-18, $5.8 million in benefits. 18-19, $7.3. 2019-20, $7.6. And in the presentation that was done in the library that I went to, again, medical expenses up 5%. So it's a valid concern, I think, of the taxpayers, that, yeah, for 10 years, it's been whatever it has been. But over the last three years, it's been an increase. And it's been driven almost solely by medical insurance. So, and it doesn't appear as though, I know we switched over to this new plan. And the hope was that, you know, we would stop the bleeding. And I think to an extent you have. But it's still 5% this last year, which is not, that's not sustainable. So again, I don't know. Numbers are however you want to take them, but that's what they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Oh, sorry, Mr. Frangos. I'm seeing you up in the balcony on that side. Step right up.
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. General questions again regarding the trail, because I'm a little confused on this. Is a survey and design being done right now? It is being done. Okay. When the design is finished, will it be presented at a public hearing?
Yes, we had said one at once that we would. Once the final design is complete, they must come back to the town council. And we will absolutely have a public forum where people can take a look at it and, you know, see what's happening. Because I don't really know what it's going to look like at the end of the day.
Well, it seems like, you know, I'm hearing the comments. It's already set in concrete. So that's why I'm asking these general questions.
Right.
Okay. Will changes be made if recommended? I know it's a foolish question, but I'm going to ask it.
By whom? You're saying changes be made by whom?
In other words, a design is submitted, and once it's looked at, they say, "No, this trail is going from this street to that street." "No, maybe we should alter it and go from that street to that street." Can that be done after the public hearing?
I would expect that at the council, after public input and after we see a final design, there's consensus that they would prefer to see a change. That certainly, there would be discussion with the designers of it and take our comments seriously.
Okay. What I'm really, in essence, that's what we're boiling down to, is after the public hearing, and you take the town council, here is the comments of the people, the residents.
Right.
All right. Steps will be taken accordingly. In other words, it will be examined. This isn't something that the minute they submit it, I don't care who says what, it's going to happen. And I hate to be so blunt.
Right, no, I get it. I would expect, and honestly, by the time this is all said and done, we're still looking at a few more years out. It's going to be a while. So I will not even hazard to speak for any future council. I would speak for myself if I'm here, that I would certainly listen to those who brought comment and then take all of the information into consideration before any decisions are changed or offered or otherwise.
Thank you for that. Just, I'm not holding anybody's hands to the fire. Is there any idea when the final, the completed design will be submitted? Is it a year from now, a year and a half from now, two years from now?
I think it's at least two years from now, if not longer, perhaps maybe even three.
Well, they're doing the design in three stages.
Right.
So stage one will probably be done in about a year. Stage two, probably a year after that. Stage three, a year after that. So they're going to do it in stages. They're going to build it in stages. So you will see the southern stage probably within the next year.
And so, just to be clear, Mr. Lee, we're going to be approving this in increments, not as a total package.
That's correct.
So as each section gets done, they'll be brought back to the council. We will look at it, and then we will either approve or deny or request changes. And then the next section will be done in the same process.
Yes.
Okay.
Within a public hearing?
There'll be a public presentation for all of the steps that we have to go through.
Thank you very much.
I don't know. No, you're saying a public hearing. Public hearings are specific events that take place. We will definitely have a public session to explain what it's going to look like.
That's all I meant.
And people will be able to understand, you know, the details of it. So that will happen for each of those remaining sections.
Every step. And public will hear it all. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Okay, well, if that's the case, I will close the public comment section, move on to the next section of our meeting. Old business, we have no old business. So on to our new business motions. I will begin by asking motion for item number one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2020-06B catch basin components for road bond under state contract 17PSX0009 to United Concrete Products, Inc., Yalesville, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2020-07B concrete block and bricks for road bond under state contract 17PSX0146 to Cromwell Concrete Products, Inc., Cromwell, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the extension of contract 2018-13E construction repairs and adjustments to catch basins on various streets with Jones Construction LLC, Farmington, Connecticut, for the 2020 road bond construction season for an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the release of a portion of open space in Camp and Bradley Streets as outlined on a map by Harry E. Cole &amp; Son entitled Property Survey Depicting Open Space Lot Line Revision, Lexington Heights Development - Section 1, dated October 25, 2019, and authorize the town manager to execute the necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other motions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Other items of interest? Mr. Lee, do you have anything else for us tonight?
Just with regards to the trail design, the expectation is that there will be many opportunities for the public to weigh in on the proposal. And I anticipate that the council will ask the DOT designers to respond to any concerns that residents raise. And you'll get that feedback and decide, you know, what might be appropriate. People do need to remember that there is some constraints with regards to environmental issues. You know, that, you know, somebody says, "Well, you know, you should run it through," you know, they're not going to run it through, you know, wetlands for significant periods of, you know, space, because, you know, for environmental reasons, they just can't move the trail into an environmentally sensitive area. So that is a restriction in terms of where they, you know, it's going to be one of the restrictions as far as where they can locate it. But they will explain that and the reasons why they chose the route and the specific area that they end up with. And there'll be plenty of time for people to, you know, express their concerns about that and for the council to hear responses to what you feel might be appropriate concerns.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add before we move along? All right. We do not have an executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.